I swear I didn't watch this thing and learn some stuff.
Is it the same as what he said earlier in the year?
Um, there was a new one that was put out in October, so it'll be from that. Um, I actually haven't watched this. I went to the TAPA, so I don't know which, I didn't go to that section. Well, so yeah, this was done at the state conference in October. So it should be different. I'll, I'll try to preview it before making subjecting me to it. And if it's not that great, I'll try to find something better. Good, good, good.
She has a super is on right now.
Okay. All right, so let's roll with it. Here we go. I'll try to give you a little bit of a break before, well, chance of tonight's meeting too. So historically, planning, yay, we get to do it. Um, and it's largely an administrative role similar to the Board of Zoning Appeals, where you hear the applications that are made based on their merit. It's not really, the county commission gets to set the rules and make the rules and do that kind of thing. And this is really just, hey, does it check offices or does it not? And so this is how they get impeded. And we, uh, he went through a lot of historical information, which is great. I love it. Um, it's based off of the Fifth Amendment that says that, people cannot be deprived of life, property without due process, um, nor shall private property, property be taken for public use without just con- I love, I can talk tonight. It's gonna be awesome. It's so good. Without just compensation. And then the Fourteenth Amendment, there, you know, further said that, uh, you can't deny a person within jurisdiction equal protection under the law. All right. And this is the original zoning case, where they said that zoning was created essentially as an extension of the police power. Um, Amber Really wanted to have an industrial use in residential area and they said, no, that's not safe. And the people that bought the properties said, hey, you're taking our right. Um, the lower court said, hey, yeah, you weren't taking their right. The US Supreme Court said, no, you can have that zoning, um, for people's protection. And so that has set the state, or I'm sorry, it set the precedent really, and has not been overturned since then. That was in nineteen twenty-six. And so that's where we kind of get our initial authority from. And then, this is Dillon's rule. This is what the state of Tennessee operates under. And there's, does anybody know what the other rule is besides Dillon's rule? If you're not under Dillon's, do you know which one you're operating under? It's the home rule, and that's where more authority is given to the local government.
Home?
Home, H O, yeah, mhm, home rule. So I find it interesting, and I haven't really figured out why, but the states that have income tax usually are under that home rule. And the states that don't are typically under this Dillon's rule, where the state has more authority and says, hey, local governments, you can only do what we tell you that you can do. And you can't operate beyond that. So it's real interesting. I don't know what that connection is, but I'm sure-
That's Dillon's.
That's Dillon's rule, yeah. Dillon's rule, Tennessee. Um, you think of, like, home rule would be California. And so essentially summed it up right there, that you can only, there are powers that are expressly granted or directly implied from the state. So everything that we do is based on, you hear at TCA, Tennessee Code of anything that's blah blah. Uh, Chapter thirteen has a whole lot to say about planning, so. So that's where all of our stuff comes from. And the other acts that were passed in nineteen thirty-five, which my granddad was alive then, he would, but, I mean, that was a long time ago. Um, subdivision acts, county zoning acts, municipal planning acts, um, and of course municipal with the city subdivision act, and then municipal zoning acts. And these are, they still stand. And here you see, this is what we, a lot of times will reference this Chapter thir- or Title thirteen, Chapter three, is the regional county planning. So that's where it sets up the, you know, how many members are on this board? How much training you have to have, what you can review, what's not in your purview, um, all of that. The local government, governing documents. And again, this may, I hate, I don't want to insult anybody or anybody's, you know, experience, education, anything like that. But if there's anything you have questions on that you're like, you know, I don't know anything about that, please, uh, stop me. I'm just kind of skimming through the highlights here. Yes, sir. Absolutely, I'll let you know.
You said it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm going back. This is my notebook for planning. And literally what you're going over, I have all the notes from when David and I first endeavor.
Oh.
And it's like, here's Dillon's rule, but I spelled it wrong.
You make it clear.
She takes better notes than I do.
Awesome. Yeah, and I'm, I'm not spending as much time on this just in the interest of giving us a break tonight, so. But again, if there's anything-
No, no, it's just, it's cool that, you know, I think it's-
Yeah, it is. It's good, and it's good to have a refresher, because, you know, some time has lapsed and you might have forgotten, you know. Okay, I know. Once upon a time, I did know that. Um, so here's the big three governing documents. Um, the comprehensive plan. We, right now are operating under that twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. These things are done every ten to fifteen years because they take so much time, have so much public involvement. They are very, 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 very intensive plans when you're trying to talk about the growth in the community for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years and what that should look like, what the vision is, trying to capture that and get it to be aligned. Um, so yes, when somebody does a comprehensive plan, then usually they go to the state and talk at TAPA about how they did it and the two or three years it took them to do it and all the heavy lifting. So that's where we are. You guys have started that process with Josh, with the surveys. And, um, so that's, that's where we are now. I think there was some question, and I don't, I don't want to steal any thunder or whatever, but we did talk to the mayor about, you know, there's some interest in seeing that ball moving. So that's kind of in his court at this point. All right.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Comprehensive plan.
Mhm.
Does it have any teeth?
That's a great question. Yes, but no. So, so, and here's why.
That's not sounding great, Auntie.
Here's why, I know, right? So here's why. It basically says, here's our vision. Here's what we want the area to grow and develop to be. Sometimes that aligns, sometimes it doesn't. And when you start getting applications for things consistently that aren't in line with that plan, and you're like, well, it would make sense for that area. It's grown up to be like that. Let's look at changing our comp plan. Um, that's when you do it now. In theory, every rezoning would need to align with the comp plan. Um, to say, hey, this is what we had envisioned. In reality, that doesn't always happen. We don't, here in the county, it's, it's rule, it's rural. The vision, rural, rural, rural. Except for, you know, some of the major highway corridors where there's some potential for some growth. But even that's gonna be pretty, pretty minimal. If somebody is trying to change the, to a rezoning that doesn't align, they also have to change the land use plan for that area. So, yes and no. They have to change it if it doesn't match. And it would be up to the county commission to determine, hey, do we ultimately think that this is, makes sense and is respectful to what's around it and how we see this developing? Or do we need to change our vision? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Not really. Yes, sir.
It does. I just, I, I struggle with it. I mean, one, one of the big things with the twenty thirty-five, I think, is it talks about five acre lots out of rural. Well, that was never enforced, because I don't think it could be enforced.
Right, so that's getting to, there's a couple other government, governing documents that also have to change, but yeah.
Kathy, I, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is what I've been talking to you for about the past year and a half. Because we follow the Bill of Rights rule.
Oh, instead of the home?
The home. The interpretation of regional planning commissions is that we follow our Tennessee program too, which is falls right in line with what Cindy was saying. The state government says, oh, the county was not ruled. You cannot overturn what all relations this regional planning commission has. It's been saying this for years.
You've been saying this for, since you got off.
I've been knowing it. And, and Cindy, she just closed that door and explained why. The why is because I didn't understand that concept, but while we felt, felt that it would, it makes sense because of sales tax, whatever, state income tax. But that's the reason we have a separate authority. We receive guidance from the attorneys back here, who are county attorneys, for guidance, counsel, we should. I mean, that's the right thing.
Yes.
But our overall authorization is not, as a regional planning commission, is not rest from that office down there. It's Tennessee Code of Data.
Which is, which, something Cindy just said that I don't know, I mean, caught it, but the twenty fifty comprehensive plan is in the control of the mayor.
Well, and that's what got me, that's what triggered that we, because that's the big three. We, we got, and, 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 hey, you, you're not gonna look at anybody supporting more probably than me here. I support him. I'm, I'm gonna write him a case for him. But we gotta look at where we fit in with pitching. And we fall under a different authorization, part of that we're pretty soon supposed to comprehensive, number one. It's a big focus of the, of the, of the.
Well, and, you know, because the mayor does control the planning and engineering department, I can see, you know, if he says others, there's other things that are more important. But if that's the case, and we do fall under a different code, do we need to-
I guess what I'm saying is if that's the case, and I respect the mayor, I really do respect his input, because the office has got the right vision. But then we need to be looking at different authorization for us to have the resources to carry that.
And that's, that's what I see.
Ultimately, I think we're making-
Especially the money to do this.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And we're getting the vision together.
It's really more so the fact that this staff does not have capacity. If Josh had been here and we had about two more staff people, we maybe could have done the heavy lifting. With this staff and this capacity, it would all have to go out to be taken care of. And it is a two to three year process. And it's, it's not, the, the mayor has been, we have told him, it's not that it's under his authority. We have told him that this, um, body has requested it to move forward. So there hasn't been any further dialogue than that. So not getting into any weeds here about all of that. It's just, and ultimately, that document is something that is the county commission's. The go, like, the vision, the comprehensive plan, that, that belongs to the county commission. So that's where, like, this, this body, it is the zoning, well, the subdivision regulations right here. That is this body. The comprehensive plan, that is county commission. And the zoning regulations are stuff that we work in here that's approved also by county commission. And it's, so it becomes their document. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm confused, because what, what happened back in twenty ten, eleven, twelve, is the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan was approved, which made like all of the unincorporated counties five acre parcels. That was one of the biggest. Okay, it never got adopted by the county commission, because it was never brought forward. Josh doesn't know. He wasn't here.
Sure.
Neither was Kathy or you.
Sure. I will say this, and I, I don't want to get too far into the weeds and all of this, but I will say that, like, Hendersonville, for example, they had, their last plan was done in two thousand and nine. And they had tried to revisit it and could not get the public to agree, could not get anybody to adopt it for it to be picked up past a study session, because there are so many touch points you have to have. They ultimately ended up just doing one corridor called the Westlake Plan that they approved maybe two or three years ago, because that's the only consensus they could get. And that took like two to three years to get that one thing, say, hey, here's how we want to see this area.
Well, we've been working on that since day one.
It's a long-
Josh, we've made multiple cities there, and just to have it halted is kind of a slap in the face.
Well, nobody's saying it's halted. We're just saying, hey, mayor, they would like to get some traction on it. So that's, nobody's saying it's halted.
He doesn't attend our meetings either, so.
Okay, well.
So anyway, don't want to, like, I'm just staying neutral here and just saying, hey, you know, the comprehensive plan, that is the big thing. Twenty fifty, we've gotten that started off. And I think the conversation is that we want to have, now we maybe want to contract with Josh and get him to pick that up. So he's working on getting his staff and employees and stuff. UT, UT Central, uh, uh, office of-
Central local planning.
So-
Like the longest title.
He could or would be involved?
Mhm, he could be, yeah. So we'd have to get the contract with him and things like that. That's-
Okay, and you don't realize that you shared that.
We talked about that earlier.
Yeah. So again, again, we have, don't want to speak out of turn or anything like that, but just saying, hey, that's one of our big governing documents. That's why on a lot of these things, you'll see the slide in there about this is rural place type or this is suburban place type, just to give you a feel of what the vision for that area was. Zoning regulations, that is our big zoning resolution. It has everything from what to do with your shed to processes for applications to, if you have a question, it's in there. It is so long and searchable, and we look at this a lot just to tweak it to say, hey, does this still make sense? We're getting a lot of questions about this. What can we do to tweak it? So, um, you're all familiar with that. If you're not, call us. We are, we answer fifty questions a day about it. Um, subdivision regulations, that's when somebody wants to create a new subdivision. And that is a lot of what we do in, with this body at this planning commission meeting. And then the other documents, again, design guidelines for county. Basically, the state says, hey, county, you can't really have design regulations unless it's something special like a PUD or, um, like a ADU or something like that, where you're getting a special request for it. Stormwater historic district regulations, the only historic district we have is Cast Out and Springs. All right. So again, the comp plan. Um, it is the function and duty of the planning commission to make and adopt a general plan for the physical development of the municipality. And y'all have been working very hard on it. And I do anticipate that that will gain some traction. We've just had a little setback in the past month or two with the change in leadership. So, there we go. And the zoning regulations, um, again, we talked about that. The purpose of this is to promote health, the public health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, and general welfare. Um, the chief legislative body, again, that's the county commission, is empowered to regulate the location, height, bulk, number of stories, and size of buildings and other structures, lot coverage, uh, front yards, open space, density, and all of that kind of stuff. That's all contained in the zoning resolution. And then the subdivision regulations, we talked about again, is just from this body, where we talk about, hey, this is, if you're going, I think recently you guys changed the arterial and clerector lot widths, um, to be a hundred and fifty and two hundred feet. So that really kind of cut down the flag lot situation. So that's something that is controlled in those subdivision regulations. And we'll kind of go through, we'll skip through that, because that doesn't really contain here. All right. Legislative body. Again, that is indeed the county commission. And some of you guys have to wear both hats, and that's a little challenging having to switch roles back and forth there, I'm sure. But the, the adopt the comprehensive plan with the recommendation of the planning commission as an advisory document that says, hey, this is the direction we want to see things go. You adopt the zoning resolution, or the county, the legislative body adopts the zoning resolution at, again, after the planning commission says, hey, here's what we think are good regulations. Um, you, the county commission approves the changes to the zoning regulations and the zoning map, the three zonings, PUDs and things like that. Um, the legislative body establishes the fees related to applications. And so here before July, we have, the state has said we have to go in and sort of backfill the reason that we're changing, that we charge what we charge. So we'll have to come up with, um, the numbers that say, well, zoning compliance application is seventy-five dollars, and here's why. And so that's gonna have to go to the county commission, um, to basically, trying to think of the right word for it, but, so yes, that's accurate. These are the fees you should be charging and why. Um, establish expenditures of the staff, adopt the stormwater regulations, design guidelines, and historic guidelines. And so the county commission doesn't review subdivision flats or make decisions on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Yes, sir.
We increased some of your fees fairly substantially in the recent past. How, how are they keeping up with the fourth one? Have you done an analysis of that, or did Josh before your last?
He has not, but we have been looking at it in light of the state legislation that has been changing, and we've been talking through it, and he's actually putting together something of a recommendation for the state. And it's based off of what the city of Hendersonville did. And I have done that as part of the exercise in twenty twenty-two with them, which predates this requirement. So we, I feel pretty comfortable. There'll be a couple of things that I think we adjust based, and it's typically based on the amount of time it takes each staff, staff person to look at something.
Right.
Um, and so I think there'll be some things that we see go up significantly based on that. When Hendersonville did it, they went from thirty to forty thousand dollars annually to about five hundred thousand, which is mind blowing.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, wait, last part. It said, you can't, um, you sort of, is that why they have citizens as well? Um, like this commission, for example, you have commissioners, but you also have citizens?
That's part of it, yeah. And the state also says that you can only have, like, the majority has to be citizen members on the planning commission to lead this administrative.
Is zoning the same? They have citizens as well?
On board is only the same, that's right. Here, no, that's a great question, yeah. Exactly right. Because it is difficult to wear both hats.
If we had, if, you don't have to look back those slides, but I would have said on that, the regional planning commission, I use regional planning commission, because that's how we're, uh, uh, Tennessee, that, uh, those are the rules that call us out here. But it talks about, we have heard that the commission has a duty to complete the comprehensive plan. It's a very duty, but that's pretty significant. Okay. We have a duty to do that, and if the planning commission, excuse me, the county commission cannot approve it until we approve the local regulation, approve the local regulation, then while we're looking at them internally, we're interested by this commission sitting here tonight to possibly come on full time and serve some hours, the full time staff along with Josh, so that.
Well, I'm sure, yeah, and there are committees that y'all will serve on all that, yeah. Absolutely, yeah.
But, you know.
Because you're, you're an integral piece of that. And we're not saying it's on stop, like pause or hiatus or not moving forward, like, none of that.
I have to jump on the back way. First, you know, uh, would you, what would you use to stall? Or is it worth to use to go? First, she, that, that, that's playing a stall, and you said, no, that's stall. Well, with where the speed that we're running now, which I do understand why, but I mean, I do understand why, that I have two and a half years left on this commission. I don't perceive it to be appropriate until two and a half years at this speed. No, I'm just supposed to go up.
I think two and a half years is reasonable. I think it really could be not, like, come in March? No, it wouldn't be approved by then, but, yeah, no, I don't see, like, it is something that the county definitely needs to look at and come up with, like, the vision and get that out of them. And I feel like, go ahead.
For the record, I, I think, I believe, I believe that two and a half years is extremely too long. It's not acceptable.
Well, you've already been working on it, right?
Yeah, you've already got a year in, so you're looking at maybe a year, I think, reasonable.
It started in about January twenty twenty-three.
I'm talking about two and a half years, you know, I mean.
Yeah, no, I- If I spoke out of turn or gave incorrect impression or anything like that, I apologize. I'm saying, I'm not doing it this month. I'm like, that's all. I can't.
No, I do, I do understand that before it's time to fail, I say, yeah, this ain't, this has nothing to do with full time. We're, we're talking about the last part here. We've got full time staff that are up here.
Yeah, yeah.
And they just, they can't, can't take on much more.
Well, and, and, you know, she's, Cindy is telling us, since Josh left, it's changed a lot. And so we need to, maybe, uh, you know, I, I don't want you guys killing yourself to get this done and everything else we've got to do. If we need to hire down to Josh or anybody else, let's do it. But I, I think, I think the wrong drive is, I think the people want us to create, I mean, just to dispel.
Sure, yeah, and I think, uh, really and truly, that was a huge outpouring. I think the community support is there, and I really think all sides are having similar vision, which is pretty rare and awesome. So I think it's a good time to harness that wind and, and capture that, yeah. And, and say, okay, here's, here's the thing. So again, yeah, this is the current resource with me.
I just, I just see at the end of this-
As much as I would love, as much as I really enjoy envisioning things like today.
I'm seeing a comprehensive plan, they both, but they, it's got members that contributed to this. And they died five years ago, they died three years ago.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I think the last time somebody, the last time I know of something was when Rodney Jordaner was here, and he tried to get the long haul corridor vision, and then that got, that was, yeah, that was not great. Yeah, it was, right, and getting people to agree and saying, hey, here's what we, we see for this area. But I feel like there's a much better consensus now, everybody saying, hey, we want to protect the rural character and things like that, so this is a good time to, to capture that. But anyway, moving forward, uh, with the training here. Regional Planning Commission, TCA thirteen, Chapter thirteen, three, one oh one. This is where we spend a lot of time, uh, where we get all of our rules. And so you'll see this referenced so often in so many of our documents. I won't, you know, bore you with all of that information, but the regional, there is a little bit separate regulation between municipal and regional, um, but essentially they function very, very similarly. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals. I personally love this Board of Zoning Appeals. I've been doing that for eleven years in various capacities.
Did you say you prefer the old bros?
I did not say that.
I felt that too.
To me, it's-
You felt it?
Nope, nope. If you were any better, you'd be on that board. Yeah, no, no, it was, it, because it's sort of, they get to hear the creative things. Like, we say, hey, here's the rules, and they hear the creative, um, ideas that kind of say, yes, that makes sense, or no.
Do you see it as being serious?
Yeah, there, it's, it, it's exciting. I never know what's gonna happen, but, um, yeah, but that's it. And the other thing that they do is hear special questions, which is where, um, perhaps we've been put in a rock and a hard place, and they act as judge and jury to say, yes, that is a major home-based business, or whatever the case may be, to kind of keep. Anyway, they act as judge and jury, and that, um, that's really a nice function to have. Let's see here. B C A, like, here's a setback, there's some things like that. Um, am I going the right way? No, I'm going backwards here. All right, let's keep it moving. Rezoning. Um, so you see this, and again, the, the area people get tripped up on is straight zone and plan development. A straight zone property allows all the uses in that zoning district. Um, so there's a, a chart at the end of the zoning resolution, if you've never looked at it, and it has every possible use. And under each zoning, it says, yes, you can do this, or no, you can't, or you gotta go to Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, straight zone allows for all the things. And we, in our office, generally recommend- And we, in our office, generally recommend people not go this direction because there are some uses that are undesirable, um, in each zone. And so we typically direct them to do this PUD type development, which limits the uses, and then also gives you guys a little bit of leverage to say, hey, you're asking for something special here, and here's some things that we would like for you to consider, um, while you're doing that. Perhaps it's, I mean, particular building design, or landscaping, or quite a bit more. And then the county commission ultimately is the one to kind of negotiate this PUD approval. Um, subdivision plaques, that's, we spend a lot of time in here on subdivision plaques. Um, and we consider major, anything with, um, five lots or more is major. What, yeah. Yes, that's right. I was, like, totally questioning my sanity. Three lots is what we consider major here in the county. And so that's what you guys see, anything that's three lots or more. Five lots or more, the state has said, hey, or, I'm sorry, five lots or fewer, the state has said, hey, we can, you can review that administratively if your planning commission and county commission wants to allow you to do that. Um, so currently, those three to five lots that you see come through, you guys, it could be done at the staff level. Anything five or more has to come to you guys for those preliminary plaques. But currently, we haven't changed any regulations, so you're seeing the whole shebang. If you ever wanna change that, if you ever wanna get your Tuesday night back, you just let me know.
So you, you guys, you guys do one or two lots.
We do one or two.
You give three and over.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you, yes. Um, and then final plaques, again, similarly, I don't know that we would wanna take it on, but, again, the state says final plaques up to twenty-five lots can be approved administratively. Currently, we still send them all three lots and over to you guys. Um, and that's because, in theory, they should line up with the previous approvals that you guys have seen, and it's just checking the box for a final plat. Um, but again, the rules, you know, the regulation between the zoning resolution and what you guys and the county commission would have to say, yeah, you wanna not see as much of the staff handle that. But, anyway, subdivision plaques have to be placed on the planning commission agenda within thirty days of filing, um, and then also, if it's substantially complete. And then also, you guys have sixty days upon that initial consideration to make a determination on it. So that's where, when you see sometimes in our slides where we're like, hey, keep the state law in mind, that's what it comes from, it says, you can defer it once, but not twice, so you have to make a decision on it. So if you're gonna approve it, fine, if you're gonna deny it, then it needs to be based on, um, a reason it doesn't meet the subdivision requirements. Uh, if you're gonna defer it, ask for more information, that's all, it's kind of material information there. Um, and then, but you gotta make a decision within sixty days, or it's automatically approved. Um, subdivision plaques, let's see. Uh, again, this just kind of defines that the sketch plat is the concept of how they'd like it to develop. Typically, you're gonna see that when you've got a PUD, um, a preliminary plat. That's, um, what I'm gonna do, the infrastructure with supporting calculations. So the preliminary plat is still very theoretical, but we, we here ask that the construction plans be submitted simultaneously. This body reviews the preliminary plat, the engineer reviews these construction plans. It's engineered documents that talk about drainage, infrastructure, and all of that. Um, and again, construction plans are approved to staff by staff prior to construction. So after it gets out of this body from preliminary plat approval, then those plans are thoroughly reviewed by the engineer. They have a pre-conference meeting with the engineer and stormwater staff, and then they're turned loose for construction. We say the infrastructure has to be installed before they can come back to you guys with that final plat. Um, so that's kind of how the flow of how it works here. And then, uh, the final plaques, here's what I've done to develop the lots, here's what I've actually installed, and then once, once this body approves it, the plat gets recorded, and then the lots can be sold. Does that make sense? Anybody have any questions about that? Okay. All right, site plans, these are gonna be, basically, the zoning resolution says anything that's three thousand square feet or more that's non-residential, or new parking lots, uh, parking lot additions that are over fifty percent of what's already there, that comes to this body. Um, there's a couple under that that would come to staff for review. We see a lot of, um, just smaller buildings or smaller parking lots additions or something like that. Um, so we have one site plan before us tonight, and some of them, again, are straight zone, and the zoning allows for it, some of them are part of a PUD. If it's part of a PUD, it's gotta match what the PUD's approvals were, um, unless, and if it doesn't, then they've gotta go back and amend that PUD. And, all right, construction plans, again, the detailed planning and engineering document that shows how a project will be constructed, um, the timing of the construction plan is not spelled, spelled out in state statute, but, again, required early enough in the process that you can say, hey, is this feasible or not? Um, and once we get those engineered-type drawings, then that's really when there's some debate. Um, but that's typically when something's considered vested, because you've spent a lot of money determining whether or not it'll work at that point. And then they typically accompany the site plan, um, as part of, it's, you'll see it in your site plan as part of it, and then you get your preliminary plat, and this body, we've been, so this is a good question I have for you guys, it just kind of came up at the last meeting. Um, most places, most planning commissions do not see those construction plans. I think Josh has been providing them to you guys for a long time. I wanna make sure that you're getting the information you need to make your decisions, but I don't wanna confuse you or overwhelm you with information on something like this. These documents are under the county engineer party. So do you want me to continue to provide that to you, or is it, okay? I'm happy to do it, I just wanna make sure.
We've, we've got, we've got a sharp.
Absolutely. I, I know, I told him I wanna put him on staff, like, he is so.
I think especially the stormwater drainage.
Yeah.
Which is how that's involved, the elevation, you know, those.
I don't, John is probably the only one who really doubts on, on, you know, I do.
Sure.
But, but I think most of us, if not all of us, understand the whole logic behind gravity.
Right, yeah, if you got a big lot, it's flattened, but if you got smaller lots, and they're steeper, then definitely, like, those numbers can make a, they, they matter, I mean, can it be done or not?
Just the repairs we are continuing to make in the county because of, you know, and I realize there, there wasn't a planning engineer or staff years ago.
Right.
You know, it's always good to have a second set of eyes in this body, who's gonna be reading, so, suppose.
I have a question.
Sure.
Forgive my stupidity on this. Approval that will vest the project per statute, TCA thirteen four three ten. On the construction plans, this is speaking about, however, the state changed the law recently, and maybe I'm thinking of something different here, Tom has done a question, that as soon as they submit it, it's now vested.
That's correct.
It, it's vested with the requirements.
Yeah, you, you've gotta meet the requirements, but this is the go date.
Yeah, you can't change the requirements later.
And it's not, yeah. Yeah.
Substantial provision.
And it's preliminary, and I, I printed this for you guys, I don't know if it's helpful at all. We're gonna start having applicants turn it in, um, but these are our checklists, and so the vesting that comes with the state is preliminary plat, it's not even construction plans. We make them turn them in at the same time, because, again, we have a department, can it be done? But we don't review for all completeness until the preliminary plat.
That would be a waste of their money.
Absolutely.
If they didn't turn the church plans in, and they couldn't do it, and they paid, you know, the process, I mean, that's just really a failure to deal with.
Yeah, we're like, hey, turn it in, and we'll give it a customary glance. If this is approved, then we'll thoroughly inspect, and if it can't be, then you, you're exactly right, they'll have to revise things. We have a lot of times see people take out lots or whatever, but, yeah, yeah. But, anyway, I'll, um, you know, I'm passing these out, but, I don't know if that's helpful, but I think we're gonna start having them turn that in with their applications, and that should help clarify, make, make everything a little bit, yes. And keep me from having to be like, this is not right for planning commission review, try again. Um, all right. And we have about fifteen minutes left, so I don't wanna spend too much time. Variances, there's two kinds of variances. One of them is on lots that have basically been created, and that goes to the BZA. The other is subdivision deviations or variance from the subregs. And so those are lots that people are trying to create that maybe don't align with what's in the subdivision regulations. So we'll see one of those tonight where the regulations changed and a hydrant couldn't be installed, and I'll talk about that later, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but, um, again, that, that's where this body will look at lots that are being created, the BZA looks at lots that have typically already been created. That helps clarify the difference there. And then special exceptions, again, that's the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they typically are gonna be looking at uses, uh, but sometimes they look at, um, there's things, the state says a variance, you have to have a hardship with the shape, topography of the lot that makes it difficult to reasonably build on your property or make use of your property. And so there's gonna be things that people can't get a variance from, and that's where special exceptions come into play. Um, and so that might be like an accessory dwelling unit, like, you're not gonna have a hardship that warrants you have an accessory dwelling unit, so they put it in a special exception category. And then we talked about the, the plan developments given the flexible zoning. Um, and a lot of times when we're talking about residential, then they're gonna have a little bit tighter density, but they're gonna do more improvements to the roads, traffic handles, uh, having different design standards, open space requirements and things like that, that would make it, to try to balance out for their density request. I, I don't think we've had one of those in a long time. What we're seeing come through now has been approved a long time ago. Uh, but there can be some with, like, the dark PUD, where they're trying to get a variety of uses as well. And so we'll see a site plan on this tonight. Um, annexation, I think we're running out of time. You guys wanna call it here, so you can have a little break? Okay, let's do that.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start the Regional Planning Commission meeting, and it is five oh two on November eighteenth, and, uh, we will have initially the invocation by John Daltry, and the pledge by Commissioner Denver Holmes. Please stand.
Father, we thank you, Lord, for this time. Father, we lift up Lord and the leadership of Sumner County. Father, the mayor and the commissioners, Father, we ask that you would provide guidance and direction. Father, that you would, uh, give them, Father, uh, just inspiration, Father, to continue on, Father. Uh, I know that it is, from what I've seen, a very difficult job and time-consuming, Father. And we just ask for your blessings, Father, to be upon, follow the administration of this county, Father. Lord, we ask that you be with us, Father, during this meeting, guide and direct us, give us, uh, guidance. Father, we wanna represent, Father, the citizens of this county. Father, uh, most of all, we wanna represent you, Father, Father, in what your will is, Lord. We just thank you and praise you, Father, in your precious Son's name we ask these things. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
May be seated. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes unless there are corrections.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Daltry.
Uh, on minor, very minor. Uh, page three, uh, second paragraph, starts with Mr. Klein opened the floor. Second sentence, no one, should be two separate words. And also, and I need some help from Mr. Straw on this. Page eleven, third paragraph from the bottom, it states, Mr. Straw stated that we have water problem. I don't know that we're missing a pronoun or something there, but, and the second next sentence, Mr. Straw stated that, stated that his, barely meets the minimum standards of twenty-five hundred. I don't know whether that twenty-five hundred is the correct number or not, I don't know whether Mr. Straw even remembers, it's cut my head.
Run, Rickard.
Yeah, actually, I appreciate that, uh, to, uh, with the problem, uh, the problem being, uh, or the perceived problem, perceived problem, that, uh, that the number, as in the minimum standard for gallons per minute flow with the fire protection standard, it would be five hundred gallons permitted, it would not be twenty-five hundred, so that means that it is correct. And there's nothing else in that sentence that I see that needs clarification, was, you say something?
Okay, and you're correct, yes. Then I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion from Commissioner Holmes, second by. Commissioner Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's more than extension, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Okay, uh, I would entertain, unless there are changes, approval of November agenda. Motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Holmes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass as unanimously. All right. We will, uh, take public comments as the projects are brought forward, which is the way we've been doing it for a long time now. So, uh, go ahead and start with Bullard Farms, please.
All right, so Bullard Farms, uh, is occurred from the October Planning Commission meeting, and, or request for additional information for the corrected soils map, completed information, and for drainage calculations. And just a little bit of our pressure, it's eight residential building lots on fifty-seven point seven three acres on Greenfield Lane in the rural preservation district. And, um, there's an overview of the property in context, and then zoomed in fourteen there. And again, just, just hitting the highlights of what you saw last month, they do have one existing hydrant, and they're proposing a second one in between lots six, seven, and, that was difficult not to do that. And then, um, so the, the Bullard Farms preliminary plat, again, the public water, um, is provided by Castellini Springs webpage, and the six-inch water line is along the front inch there. The availability letter from Castalian Springs webpage, utility states that adequate water and fire pressure exists. We did get some clarification from them, um, today that stated that that letter that was provided is accurate. And then the fire protection will be provided by the volunteer fire department. And the approved subject soils map has been submitted. The roads, the adequate runways shown as dedicated along Greenfield Lane. The lot widths meet the one hundred and fifty-foot minimum requirement for collectors. Uh, the drainage, the construction EPSC and drainage plans, uh, the supporting calculations have been provided. And a notice of coverage from TDEC will be required. These were the home designs. Again, the county does not, um, have design departments. This is just what the, uh, developers putting forth, just to give you a little context. It's in the rural place type. And follows those regulations with the two-point-three acres. And then the findings of fact, um, basically says that it's in agreement consistent with the recommendation of the county's comprehensive planning Florida area. Uh, the application doesn't contravene the purposes of the zoning. Um, the subdivision is designed and not create adverse effects on the property owners, adjoining property owners. And, um, no one property owner, small group will benefit materially to the detriment of the public. So if approved, the next steps will be to obtain the construction plan approval, which was submitted in the packet from the county engineer, as well as the requirements from the state. But they'll need to obtain, um, plat approval from the planning commission once the infrastructure is installed, uh, with the hydrants. And then after the plat is approved by the planning commission, final plat, um, it would need to be recorded and then the lots may be sold. The, I've included here, and it was in packets as well, the additional information on the drainage calculation. This is just one snippet there, um, on one page. And then this is the updated soils map. And then before you write the example motions, number one, to find that all county requirements are met and to approve the preliminary plat for Bullard Farms contingent upon obtaining approval from the county engineer, the construction plans, the land management department, and all state departments. Number two, to deny preliminary plat for Bullard Farms due to non-compliance with the following provisions of the subdivision county regulations, which is the state, those right there.
Okay, do we have anybody who wants to speak to the project? No, okay. All right, so, uh, Mr. Riss.
Mr. Chairman, it appears that the, uh, the project is in line with what our expectations were. I believe they provided requested documentation. I'd like to look for number one, A.
Okay, we have a motion for one A. Yeah, we'll have comments if we can get a second of the motion. Is there a second of the motion? Okay, motion, Blackford.
I'll say it.
Second, okay, second by Commissioner Miller. All right, question, Mr. Straw.
I just got a couple of comments to make, uh, and, and, and Mr. Belcher appreciates you bringing up those corrections on the last month's many minutes, because that's, that's where I'm gonna go. First of all, I'd like to say that Mr. Fleming, uh, is, is, it appears to be an outstanding willer. His quality, his work is, is a cut above most of what I've seen since he's here tonight. I just want you to know that, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, and my comments are not directed to him, because he's acting on information that needs to be provided. And that was stated last one, too. My, my, the issue I have, and I think it's, for full transparency, ladies and gentlemen, we're going back to the letter, the water letter provided by Seersley, who, who was an outstanding water district. And that's, and, and with full transparency, I served as commissioner on that board in the past. Because of that, and I know to have the area, uh, the numbers I was given on the flow rate of five oh two, uh, the engineer that actually conducted the test, uh, told me that approving additional lots on Greenfield is getting real close to minimum requirement of expanding the lines. They're currently at six inches off of highway twenty-five. The issue at hand is the water letter that was issued. And I draw your attention to the packet, uh, and if you'll bear with me here without going into too much detail. The, uh, the letter that was provided, it, it looks official, and it is official. It's an official letter. It was official letter signed by a qualified engineer that I personally know. However, there's one large flaw of this letter, ladies and gentlemen, that this letter was issued done for these eight lots. These issued, this letter was issued for the seven lots across the street almost two years ago. Now, this, this, uh, had no problem with the letter. And I really don't question the flow of water because of the quality and reputation of individuals that are doing this type of work. My question is, as a planning commission member, do we accept a two-year-old document, near the two-year-old document, that has been issued by an engineer for a different project? And that's the question I said here. So as, as we, we talk about this, I have no problem, uh, Mr., uh, this is why they don't want to approve the motion. I, I, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, is to be transparent. The water letter that was issued wasn't even for these eight lots. I think if we want to continue to do this to the standard that this commission has, everything needs to be checked properly. And I would definitely believe that Mr. Belcher would agree with me on that. So that is my issue. We have a water letter. Now, the county engineer, Marshall, there's no doubt I agree with comments that he means privately. I believe he's correct. But the issue is, he's looking at numbers, we're looking at compliance with the requirements, that's what we did.
When you, when you say you believe he's correct, when he believes correct.
Uh, I believe he's correct when he, when he told me that Seersley has stated that there's the water availability is, is, is there. I do believe it. I don't believe it's the numbers that is on this report, because of, and I'd love to be there when this does begin. Because I don't believe these numbers. That's just been part of a big difference from five oh two to nine hundred and sixty-eight gallons a minute, eight twenty pounds per person. A large difference. So, uh, I'm just stating, I don't believe there's an integrity issue here either. I don't believe that this is nobody's fault, it's just an inherent omission of a proper document. It needs to be done properly, because we require that on every other project we do that come before this committee. We have, we have many, many times that we turn projects, well, not many, many, a few times, we turn projects away because they didn't meet the requirements of submission. In this case, the submission, the proper letter. We have a letter that is signed by an engineer that tells me, and I'm gonna read this, I'm gonna read this text, because I think it's important. He's got today has issued a letter of availability of water on seven lots in Greenfield Lane developed on February fifth, two thousand twenty-four. We have not issued a letter of availability for water on the eight lots in the Bullard Development. Thank you.
Mr. Riss.
Are you referencing something in the packet, or it's just?
I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Boyd. How, how would we work with that? I mean, if, if the, if the test was done prior to the seven houses built? And there has not been a test since then? How, how do we deal with that at the county, uh, uh, staff level?
I think from our standpoint, we go off, you know, what is, what is required. And they, they submitted what is required for SAA to make application. And that's what, that's what I think is, I, I think this is kind of, uh, and so in the letter, you know, mentioning that the eight, eight houses, uh, property Greenfield, I wish I was going to leave this afternoon, just to get firm, just kind of go over the, the question. Is available water for these eight lots? And he said it was. And I sent an email and confirming that, but, um, beyond that, I don't know. I guess what is the letter? I, I guess Mr. Straw's, uh, I don't understand what he's saying. He's saying that this is not, this is maybe for a different, this was provided, it was provided for a different property.
Uh, you said for the project. This, this initial letter issued in twenty-four was for the project, the seven lots, that actually, Mr. Fleming, I'm not too sure he constructed all of those. I believe he constructed three of those, is that right, sir?
I did four, um, four.
Four, four, four faulty ones right across the street. So, again, we have a district manager who is a fine person, fine person. But it's not, it's just a fine person. But he is not the person that has his name on the signature, right? It's an engineer. This engineer says he's never even heard of Bullard Farms, which is the eight lots across the street. I would request that we have a water test and document it properly and submit it to the county. And that, that's, that's all I was on saying. If we're gonna do it, let's do it the right way. Thank you.
Any other, uh, Commissioner Miller?
So, I went through the office packet and I found the actual letter. And it says it's from Castalian Springs, both the water district, but there's, there's no date. But it says, to whom it concerns, Castalian Springs Water, the Blueberry District does have water availability at Greenfield Lane for eight tap at the property. If any question, please contact Henry Lane. Uh, and then it has a signature generally district manager and founder, but there's no date, it's not specific to... So this, was this, Mr. Straw, is this the letter that you called about, or is this?
I believe that issued, that letter may have been issued today, is that right, Marshall?
No, sir, I believe this was submitted with the original allocation. It, it is. And I called, what I called was relieved, uh, the second name, I, I referenced this letter in my conversation. Just to clarify that the, the water was still, you know, still available for those eight lots on Bullard Farms. And he said, said it was.
He said what?
He, he said it was, it was available.
You know, I'm just saying, we don't have waters available. There's a big difference between saying waters available as a district manager and water roof available at least the standard fire safety of five hundred gallons per minute between PSI. And all, do, do, I hope people understand that there are potential availability here. I hope they do, because it's not the, it's not the district manager for water district that certifies the water test. It's a qualified engineer, which I'm gonna draw up from Mr. Belcher on any occasion for other, other topics. And that's all I'm asking, is that we have a proper water test. Let me, let me say something else. I believe every other water district in Sumner County, which I guess I'm really saying what actually told the district. They issue all our water availability standards, but this letter is only valid for up to a hundred twenty days. I highly recommend that all letters that we have has a standard of, of something to that nature. I don't know what the answer will be, Marshall would probably have a better input on that. You know why that is? Because it changes. Thank you.
Okay, so, any other questions? And I said earlier that I don't know about crunch numbers on fluid flow. So, uh, I, I don't know how much the water situation could have or might have changed out of Greenfield Lane in that area with eight new houses and whatever else has happened out there. There, there are five acre lots that have been developed, we wouldn't know about them necessarily, is what I'm saying. If, if there, if there were some houses built on five acre lots that needed water, we would, no, we would have no connection. So, I guess, uh, we, we have no question at this point, because we didn't have a second. So, but we didn't, oh, that's right, we gave the second, okay, that's right, forgot about that. Commissioner Miller.
I, I completely understand what Mr. Straw is saying, because, I mean, there's a letter with their date that says it's there, but then it's something from two thousand twenty-four across the street that says that it has water. Now, it's really no different than someone coming in and a traffic study in twenty twenty when the, you know, nobody was on the road. I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, and that we have the sixty days, that we have to make a decision. Um, and I mean, this could just be maybe a clarifier and not, you know, something where we need to have number two instead of number one. But it does seem a little fishy to me, just saying, so I'm not really sure. I mean, I know we haven't had a comment yet, so I don't know if there's, you know, an easy solution to this, maybe for...
I actually do have one more piece of information. And hopefully I made it into your packet, but when the original water availability letter came, I asked them to provide an updated one, because they also had to have our protection with installing a new hydrant. And at that time, they provided another letter, again, not dated, that said that they had the ability to provide the fire protection as well. Hopefully they did in this packet, I know it did last month, because that was something I pulled into question at that time. Uh, so I don't know, you know, I just wanted to throw that out for the purpose of this discussion. And as Mr. Boyd mentioned, he did call the, um, Castalian Springs Water District today. And they said water is still available. So they, they are the ones to monitor their capacity and determine how many homes are on there, you know, tapping into it and everything like that. And they have said that they do still have capacity. Uh, certainly I can understand the concern and want to make sure that it's still valid and pertinent to this subdivision, but just wanted to give you that additional piece of information.
Thank you. Commissioner Bellcher.
Couple, I do have some other questions beyond this, but, uh, on this, first, just a general comment. From this point forward, can we request that the planning office, when they receive letters like this that have no dates, request them to resubmit it with a date? Secondly, uh, I think, and not at all that I doubt Marshall had the conversation, but I'd like to get a follow-up written document to the effect that the capacity is there, because the capacity is affected upstream, you know, of here. There could have been another neighborhood that was built, you know, that affected capacity at this particular location. Uh, but my, I guess, potential solution question goes back to legal. Can we add a statement to the approval, to the motion to... Can we add a statement to the approval, to the motion to require dated, these letters get dated, to require a up-to-date hydrant flow test just for verification? Add that to the emotion to approve? And will that satisfy the legal side?
Counselor?
Just a note of view, I'm, I'm not as fact-intensive as you guys are, but just watching what I've seen so far, we've got a couple of different issues going on here. One is how was this thing submitted? Was it submitted properly? Are there better ways to submit it? Yes, but doesn't need to be addressed outside of what we're doing right now. The other thing is when you start going into flow testing and everything with the utility district, the utility districts have to meet standards with the state. I've been involved in some of this stuff. So they're gonna have to answer to their own person when it comes to whether they're reading the flow. So if they give a letter or they say that they can meet it, we've got to take them at their word. We can't go back behind them beyond the meter point and say, what's going on here? That's, that's their purview. You can't be going in there, second guessing their word. So if they give a bad letter, then that's on them. It's not on the county. So as far as adding additional stuff, I think that's, that's a bona fide request, but this is really more of a procedural change. I think you all ought to consider in the future. So if not having the date on there was not an issue with filing, I really think it could be taken into account now from a legal perspective. However, I would strongly encourage making changes.
Thank you. Okay, so really, I guess we're down to two issues and one is not for this time. And I think all, all the points have part, and there we go. Commissioner Miller?
I was just gonna see if we could add, I was the second, so if, if the main intentions appear that any C with Mr. Belcher's language, just with the, the water letter just to have it, yeah. Or just to verify, which actually I do know that you verified that, so if we could just maybe, I think you wanted something in writing, verify. Can we add as a C and then?
Is that pretty, okay. Well, then go ahead. Do you want Mr. Belcher to give you the language or?
Well, I think he just, he just wants a C in, you know, wants it in writing that the date is correct and it's current. I mean, I don't think it needs to be anything elaborate.
Okay, can we handle that, Cindy? Okay. Yeah, okay. So the amendment to the motion is, is acceptable to the first and the second. So I...
I do have some other questions.
Oh, you got some other questions? Okay, go ahead.
And our representative for both forms, uh, it's, some of it's technical, some of it's not. I don't know.
I hope I don't have things to deck around. Yes, sir.
You, you understand. The, you provided the, the flow calculations.
Yes, sir.
For outfall one. First, I'd like to comment that the, the flow actually increased with the calculations, which I have to defer to Marshall, whether I have to assume that's acceptable. It didn't increase much, but it did increase. Uh, but in the language of it concerning the stream, it reads something to the effect of stream was modeled using the most conservative measures for slope, depth, bottom width, et cetera. I'm just curious as to the source for the most conservative measurements, because that's somewhat subjective.
So to speak on the string first, I used the field duffel that we had, basically the logoslot, which I think Marshall, I think was one and a half percent or something, so pretty flat. Uh, I think it was a four-foot bottom, I'm wrong here, so I'm lying, I'm sorry. I've slapped since I did this, but it was, I basically, I, I took the smallest area of the string, cross-sectional, put that into the model, picked the flattest, and ran the capacity, which came in, I think, at two hundred and ninety, give or take, CFS. And I think the biggest, and I was for a hundred years ago, and the biggest, I think, after was two fifty-one, give or two fifty-ish in that area. So there was a small increase. I talked to Marshall about it and I actually get in the weeds, but I technically used the curve number for the worst case scenario. There's arguments to be made based on Metro's regs, where if you're treating it for water quality, your curve number isn't actually this high. You're lowering it a little bit. So that seven percent you see is worst case scenario, realistically going off other, you know, Metro, Marshall, other people's regs. It's probably a little bit better, but you know, one of y'all know the worst. Then use the most conservative part of the string. I mean, if there's part one downstream, it's the same, you know, but it's showing that it can handle.
I would just, for future reference, it would help me, I don't know about the others, but with a statement like that, since you clarified that it was based on the topography of the site, that's pretty important, as opposed to just some arbitrary conservative numbers that you drew from somewhere. Let's see. And I'm gonna show my evidence on this one, I'm sure. I can find it. This is the watershed model schematic. What exactly is this supposed to be telling me?
Yeah, that didn't print to me, I'm sorry. So basically each of those, each of those clouds, I believe two on the left are your, your pre-development outfalls. So you've got outfall one and outfall two. Each of those clouds, again, we didn't read, sorry, a little nerdy, but each cloud represents the drainage area, how long it takes to get from point A to point B, and how much impervious area is in it. So I've got each of that for outfall one, which is the big one that is the more concerning, I guess, and then outfall two, which one I'll change it. So if you go on there and look, the pre for outfall two and the post for outfall two are exactly the same. Nothing changes. So it didn't print well, but that's what each of those are. There's pre for outfall one, pre for outfall two, and then pre for outfall two, sorry, I got that wrong. Pre for both, post for both. So that's what those clouds are.
And just a general comment, Cindy, we have a similar page that looks the same where something did print in another one of the agenda items. I don't know whether it was the document they submitted that is at fault and looks like this, or whether it's through reproduction process. But I'd like to make sure that for, this needs to show what it needs to show as opposed to four little clouds, numbered clouds, so.
Yeah, I didn't see four numbered clouds on any of my screens, so.
And what, did you use a software for the?
Yes, sir. I used a, a hydro, I think it's called HydroCAD, HydroGraphs. It's a built-in with AutoCAD and the most, it's probably fifty-fifty split. Some companies use that, some use, um, Andy might be able to help me. I know they use it, but there's another topic one. I think it's called HydroCAD. Is, or something.
Do you know what version it was?
It's in the, it's the one that's built into the latest in greatest AutoCAD, so should be.
So current, twenty twenty-four?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And does, do the calculations with regard to the stream, does it predict that the water escapes its banks during?
No, sir. Not when you add in our small bank rates. It still stays within that, that smallest, flattest section of the stream.
Okay, all right. All right, that's all I have.
All right, keep it up.
Thank you. And we'll be happy to add the dates on the, I just forwarded the email from them with their, that way it has the date on it, but I'll be happy to add the date on there.
Mr. Straws?
In addition to what Mr. Belcher was talking about and that else, by the way, I appreciate all that feedback. It's absolutely fantastic. With clarification, I appreciate that. Looking at the, um, field lines, the, the field lines on each cloud, for clarification, because I, I couldn't determine by looking at it, that does, or I'm asking, does that include primary and secondary socks in case one fails? Can somebody give us that?
Yes, sir, it does. It'll have the primary and duplicates, so over under, if it's, you know, twelve thousand square feet of, of good dirt, it'll satisfy the initial and then a duplicate or a repair.
And the reason I ask that question is, is because I realize I'm familiar with the soil in that area and soil definitions. It's not the best soil in the world, but, but if it meets in, in, in that criteria of the primary and secondary lines, then, excuse me, field lines, and then that's all I need to know. Thank you for that clarification.
We need to do public comments, we need to vote, I think.
I'm, I'm sorry.
We need to do public comments, and I think we're ready to vote, right?
We, we did do, yeah, yeah, and there was nobody that signed up.
Even better.
Okay. All right, so we have, we, we have an additional item C, which if I understand it correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that is going to be an updated letter with updated dates.
Verification.
Yeah, on, on the, on the water supply and, uh, Mr. Belcher?
And written verification concerning Marshall's phone conversation with Mr. Lee. So that we have a record of that conversation, written record of it.
Okay, Kathy, have you got that? Great. All right. Any other questions or comments? Then let's go ahead and do roll call vote. Kathy, your argument.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
Mr. Straws?
Yes.
And Mr. Elston?
Yes.
Okay, that's you now, Mr. Fleming. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
All right, Cindy, item two, Coates Estates.
All right, yes. Uh, this is Coates Estates preliminary plot. It's a major plot with four lots under five acres. There is a larger five-acre tract that's not included in your review, but it is done by the property owners, and it's being represented by Richard Graves. This is in the fifth commission voting district with Beryl Rajan. And again, so it's four residential lots on seventeen point four acres. And they're all two point three or greater tracts. And it's located on Mount Vernon Road in Back Page, which is a rural preservation piece of property. And the public water is provided again by Castalian Springs Back Page Utilities. So here you can see the property with respect to what's around it in large farm tracts out there. And then here's a zoomed-in piece of the property. The G I S lines are off slightly, so you have to use your imagination a little bit there. It does not actually include this. And then this is my attempt to superimpose the plaque on the property for your visual reference. And this is a little, this is the Google Earth review of that area. This is the plaque itself. You can see in Mount Vernon is a collector road there. And this will be done by deed at a later time. These meet the lot width standards. They have agreed to put in a hydrant. This property again is in the role place type on the comprehensive plan, which means that it's going to be, you know, larger lots, which it meets that. The adequate right of ways indicated, Mount Vernon is approximately eighteen feet wide, which means the county road standards. The proposed lot width meets the lot width requirements. And the drainage will not disturb more than one acre. It's based on each lot. This is the stormwater manager's determination on it. The erosion prevention, sediment control plans are not required. And the drainage report was included in your article. Again, here's the guidelines, the findings, the fact if you're going to approve or deny something that's based on these. And the first is that it's agreement with the comprehensive plan. The second is that it does not contravene the purposes of the zoning subdivision regulations, meaning that it meets the requirements. The third is that the subdivision will not create adverse effects upon adjoining property owners. And the fourth is no property owner, small group of property owners will benefit materially from the approval to the detriment of the public. And if it's approved, the next step will be to obtain construction plan approval from the county engineer and state permits, final plot approval, and after final plot approval is approved by the planning commission, then reported and lots to be sold. And the example motions are before you. Again, they're all to approve the preliminary plot contingent upon receiving the approval from the county engineer of those construction plans. All applicable state permits. Two, to deny preliminary plot due to non-compliance. Or three, to defer this decision in order to allow the applicant to provide additional information in that note that the state files for that sixty-day time clock.
Thank you, Cindy. Is there anybody here to speak on it? Just the advocate, okay. If, if we have any questions, we'll, we'll bring them up. Okay. Do we have any questions? Mr. Belcher?
One comment, once again, Cindy, I just mentioned this, the watershed model schematic shows up similar to the last one with just clouds. So that needs, and I don't know whether it's a copy machine or what, but that needs to be corrected. The final sheet, well, next to the last page is an aerial that has some tag blocks, but there's nothing in the tag blocks. I don't know whether that was the way it was, or whether that was, you know, something to do with the cleaning process, reproduction process. The, and I realize the fifth lot is not part of this, but the remaining road frontage on the fifth lot is only a hundred and thirty-three feet. If, if this is the road rate that requires a hundred and fifty feet, okay, it's not, okay, so much for that. And that's all I have.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion? Mr. General, I move number one. Do we have a motion for number one? Do we have a second? Second for Mr. Straws. Any questions on the motion? Then we will do a roll call vote. Kathy?
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Mr. Straws?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller? Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
Mr. Elston?
Yes.
Was that them? Okay. Thank you. All right, item two is passed. Item three, Cindy, it's all yours. It's one I'm excited about.
All right, our settlement by the ranch PUD site plan. I believe this is the first site plan for this PUD that was approved in 2023. Again, Mount Vernon Road is popular tonight. The total property was 254.75 acres. This particular parcel is 118.5 acres of that. What they're requesting with this site plan is essentially the access and a parking pad to serve an existing T room that's already on site. So this is just the first little, hey, people, if you can get here and park. Again, the county commission approved the PUD in December of 2023. The use aligns with what was on that PUD. It remains unchanged with the library. And the parking lot serves for the existing building, but it will also be a part of that PUD in use. The, it's being developed by Coates Construction and represented by Greenlit Design. Again, Castalian Springs for the win tonight. And then, let's see, the background on this. The proposed use of parking ratio approved, or conformly approved PUD, that's based on the number of seats. They'll need to update their table. But essentially, we want to have 40 seats inside, 40 seats outside. So that's 80 total. The parking is basically a 2% ratio. So they're providing 42 spaces. And then the site plan application appears to satisfy the requirements. The approved PUD concept plan is submitted as a bylaw application that aligns with that PUD approval. So this is the existing conditions based on the best aerial imagery we have available to us at the county. And you can see there's already, you know, some semblance of access there. This is very hard to read, but here it is in the grand scheme of the whole development. And this is the particular parking lot. Again, there's a wide variety of uses there. Right now, they're just providing parking for the tasting room there. And here's the access, parking, a little bit of landscaping around there. And this falls under the food and beverage service portion of the zoning resolution. And that is, initially, the calculations were based on the square footage, and that's a pretty conservative square footage. So they have provided more than what's required at this time. And the road is located along Mount Vernon Road, which is a minor collector road. And it is, in 31E, this part portion will be along the Mount Vernon Road portion primarily. The traffic lines are not expected to cross the threshold, but warrant a traffic study. And that was determined at the time of the PUD. Although this body can require a traffic study, but TDOT has completed extensive safety improvements that would align with whatever traffic study recommendations, you know, might come about.
Oh, 31.
That's right. And so this is the regulations that are in place that say, hey, this is when a traffic study is warranted. And you can see that it's not expected to generate above 100 trips, generating that need for or requirement for that traffic study. This is Mount Vernon Road, the entrance to the site currently. So what we'd be looking at is a parking area right way back there. And again, just quite a distance away from that intersection. And then here we go. This is about four acres total that it's going to take to put in this parking area and access to it. All right, so the water will be, this eventually, ultimately, new buildings will be sprinkled and fire line installed. This was all part of that approval that outlined the timing of the things. Again, right now, we're proposing this access and no new buildings. So if a new building comes before you, it'll go through this same process. And at that time, we'll be looking for the sprinkler requirements. The construction plans and drainage calculations were included with the application. And the stormwater management resolution appears to have been met because of the water quality, quantity. The maintenance inspection is not needed based on the scope of the project since there's no long-term maintenance of any new retention detention, that type thing. And then the landscaping appears to meet the buffer requirements as the property is surrounded significantly far in excess of the 25 feet buffer requirement. See, I got a little headless up there. All right. And the parking compartments have been met, and photometric plans have been included to make that parking lot safe at night. So there's the landscape plan, photometric plan. There's not any light trespass, and there's light on the parking lots. That's what we're looking for when we look at that. And at this time, they're not proposing any signage, although a sign permit would be obtained through ours. I'm sure they could choose to do so. General next steps, they would get standard construction plans from the engineer, schedule a bridge construction meeting, and then obtain the state permits. And here we are, the example motions to find that all county requirements are met. Approve and approve a site plan, contingent upon construction plans receiving approval from the county engineer, planning service permits, state permits, and then a note here on D, the future additions constructions to the site would require additional site plan approval. Number two, to defer the site plan, or three, I'm sorry, to deny, and number three, to defer for one month to request additional information.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Commissioner Miller?
I'd like to make motion number one, A through D.
Second that.
Do we have a motion? Commissioner Miller is second. Commissioner Holmes? We asked for that. There is no one there. Yeah, yeah, there's no. Mr. Strong?
I'd like to say, Mr. Lee, and is Mr. Coates here? I just want to mention, we say in sort of the lobby, I want to take this moment to publicly say that that request to put that parking lot where it's located, the access of the drive, the distance from 31 to the access to the property is outstanding. I don't think anybody could have come up with a better design than Parkers. I was going to tell you that. Thank you.
Cindy, I think it's a tight development area, or Coates is kind of the...
That's probably my partner. Carryover.
But the owner is here.
Very good. Thank you.
That's the owner right back there?
Yes, sir.
That's me. I've moved.
Okay, Mr. Belcher, you don't disappoint him.
Sorry, guys. It's in my nature. I have some questions that I can talk with Marshall about because it's more standards and things of that nature. But I do have one question I do want to voice here concerning that. It's my understanding that there is a house on the property. Is that correct? Is it a residence or is it commercial?
So Cindy, if you want to pull one of those. So the house is right to the left, right there. It's an existing house. That's going to be where it could be converted over to the tasting room.
Okay, because I thought I remembered seeing something in the write-off that there was a dwelling.
There is an existing structure there that has been lived in up until a year ago.
A little longer now.
A little over a year ago.
Okay, but it's all being changed to commercial.
Yes, and they're working with the Coates Department, right? And it's got our San Interests Architects, I believe, that's been working with the Coates Department to get the plans together. So after this is approved, he'll come in with the remodeling plans to the county.
Okay.
Just curious, how old is that house?
It's probably not as old as you think. The people that moved it, the guys who used to live in, I believe, built it. So it's less than 30 years old. That's not always one. I was just curious.
I remember it being built. It's not really old.
I interrupted Mr. Belcher. Go ahead.
It's okay. Also, Cindy, there's, were some questions that you posed back to them. And some of them were not answered. Some of them were answered that it wasn't going to be provided at this time. And then there were questions 21 through 26 that I didn't see a response at all. I just want to make sure that that's still, everything's good, you know, it complies with the regulations. Or are you, I mean, most of the time when you ask a question, you expect an answer. So I'm curious as to what might have happened with that.
I can look back at it, but the approval is with all staff comments. So they would have to be addressed. So I don't know, maybe the sheet didn't respond to it or not, or what the case may be on that, but we'll make sure that it's addressed.
Mr. Belcher?
Just a quick comment. I just want to say that I really appreciate this project and the spirit of this project. I'd love to see that level of recreation and commerce being kept in the county here. It really respects the rural community and the rural environment that really we're trying to preserve here. So I thank you very much for this, and I look forward to saving the ship up. Thanks, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comments? We have a motion. We have a second. Kathy?
Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Elston?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Muller?
Yes.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Okay. We have a demand. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, item number four, Crystal Underlock's final plat with variance.
Thank you. So this is a request of a variance or waiver deviation, whichever language you prefer to use, from the subdivision requirements related to the fire hydrant requirement for all major subdivisions. The plat, the applicant is requesting three residential building lots on Doris Road and Highway 76. And that's 4.86 acres in a rural residential zone. It's represented by Todd Volunger and Public Water, to be provided by White House Utility District. I'm going to explain this the best that I can. This is the aerial overview. And in context with what's around it, you can see it's a little bit larger than a lot of these other rural residential properties here. So it was approved in August of 2023 by this body, the final plat. Final plat approval is good for one year, and they have to get it recorded at that time, otherwise that expires. So in, as part of that, at that time, subdivision regulations allowed either the installment of the hydrant, fire hydrant, or a voluntary contribution could be made to the volunteer fire department. And it's not, it's not the equivalent of hydrants, since no hydrant's going to be installed. And I don't believe that there was a set amount that was required to be donated. It was just a provision that was allowed to help fight the fires the best I could at that time. Those provisions are known in subdivision regulations, and when a plat is submitted, it's subject to the subdivision regulations in play. The applicant did make the contribution in September of 2024. At least that's what was the date on the letter provided. So a month after the expiration. Had the plat been recorded at that time, you know, that may still kind of fall within the spirit and intent of the approval. However, that didn't happen. And so this is before you, this evening, to request that they have the variance from that fire hydrant requirement in light of the previous approvals and the donation that was made in 2024. And so in this presentation, I put the old language that allowed that contribution, the dedication, and then the new language that basically shows the approval of that. And this was the receipt provided to the Highland Volunteer Fire Department. And this was, essentially, they submitted the same plat. They're not proposing any changes. And I believe one of the comments at that time was that lot three would derive its access off of Doris Road here rather than the state highway. And so all of those, that condition would still apply, carryover, if this is, if that variance is approved. And then, so that's another here. The lot widths do still meet current requirements, and the development will not disturb more than an acre, so the EPSC plans are not required. And the utilities, again, the eight inch water line is along the road frontage. Hydrant is necessary for this. The White House Utility District states that a hydrant cannot be installed due to inadequate fire flows. And so the payment was made at that time. However, it's no longer provisioned, and so they're requesting a variance from this requirement. These lots will be on septic. And so essentially, they're asking for a variance from these requirements. And then here's the questions that are pertinent when you're granting a waiver. Does it result in an unsafe condition or harm adjoining property? If yes, it's not supportable. Is it consistent with the overall intent of the subdivision regulation? If yes, then it is. Is it related to a unique or particular physical characteristic of the lot that's not readily applied to other properties of the county? So is it something that we're setting precedent for and going against the subdivision regulations? Or is it something that is, in this particular situation, that makes sense and is not going to apply to everybody else? And if yes, it is unique, then the waiver's supportable. Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? If yes, it is supportable. Will strict compliance result in an undue hardship on the owner without significant public benefit? Then yes, it is supportable. And is the applicant proposing an alternative that meets the intent? And if yes, then the waiver's supportable. If it's approved, then the waiver's signifying approval of the final plat, which then could be recorded and sold, the lot sold. So this would be up to the determination of this body. And I believe that the representative of the volunteer fire department is here to answer any questions that you may have. The example motions are before you. And the first is to find all county requirements related to the waivers were met and approve the request, following all signatures obtained. following all signatures obtained on the plat and all conditions of approval previously granted would be met, including lot three to derive its access off of Doris Drive. Or two, to find that the county requirements related waivers are not met and to deny our request for the waiver variance, limiting this to essentially the potential for a two-lot subdivision.
Thank you. Are there any people issued to speak on this issue? No, no, it's okay. Commissioner Miller?
I just want to make sure I understand this perfectly. Was this likely a clear error, and they just missed the deadline? Or before, I mean, obviously, we passed the final plat before regulations changed. They just kind of dragged their feet in, or was it a clear error? I'm not sure.
Yeah, the applicant may speak to, but the payment wasn't made in proper time or the plat reported within the, you know, approved timeframe, the information hasn't been provided to me, but applicant gets here if they want to.
I don't really know the reason it wasn't made. I do know that the plat-
So we give you, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know why Chris didn't make it when he made it, I have no idea. But I will tell you that the plat sat at Todeck for six months in a windowsill. And we thought we'd get a signature or anything on it. And we finally got the plat back and started proceeding, going on with that. That's about the time that Todeck was closing down stuff and moving out. So we ran into that problem. But as far as why, you know, he had paid to me, I don't know.
Mr. Curiouser?
Mr. Chairman, I'm curious to hear from Assistant Chief Matt. That's, I know it's a go-up before this.
I don't think we ever opened it for discussion, and that's totally my fault.
I'm sorry.
We never opened it for discussion, so I'll make a motion for discussion, sorry.
Second. All of you, opposed?
I'll just start and talk.
So I think my questions are, kind of what is the, what is the ultimate measure? If we don't have the appropriate hydrant, are you adequately equipped to deal with these situations as a department? Or what are kind of the alternatives? If not, this is a safety issue in Miami, where I sit right now. I just want to know what the situation is for a professional.
We appreciate that. We try to be prepared. Obviously, there's not a high rate of fire, we have to bring the water to us. So all of our trucks have a thousand gallons of water. We have a tanker, we have equipment. What we have is what they call a drop tank, where we put it on the ground and essentially fill up a small swimming pool. That holds, I think it's twenty-five hundred gallons of water, and we take that, get it in your truck, you know, to fire. Where it complicates things is we only have, you know, one tanker with our departments. So we have to allow multiple departments coming to us to bring equipment. So it's time-consuming, it's not as easy to have unless there's a hydrant there. So, I mean, we deal with it all the time, and it is what it is, a lot of other parts of the county don't have hydrants. I'll give you an example, we have a fire a couple nights ago, and we had a hydrant a thousand feet away. We were able to establish water supply quick, we were on a fire court. As if there wasn't a hydrant, we'd have to just, you know, wait for those resources to get there and have the manpower to get there to establish that.
How long does one of those last, an average house fire, for example?
To establish the water supply and stuff, honestly, that's hard to say in the volunteer world. You know, our staffing is low, you know, response times are varied, and so I would say, I'm just going to give an average, it gives a, maybe it takes an extra fifteen to twenty minutes, maybe thirty minutes to get it going. My city, our staffing is low, we only get an engine there, we better wait for tankers coming from, you know, Pottstown or White House Community or Oak Road, and that takes time. And we work well with the city of Portland, but they don't, you know, they don't have a tanker, they don't have that kind of water capacity. So unfortunately, that's hard to answer. But it does, it does take longer instead of us, you know, obviously securing the water supply right there, you know, within a thousand feet or so of the house.
So it sounds like it gives a little bit of anxiety when you follow up to these situations.
Like I said, in the county, we're used to it, you know. But I will say, I'm a full-time fireman before the city, and it is wonderful to say, okay, there's a fire happening within a thousand feet of infrastructure in the city. So water supply's not really a big deal. But again, in the county, it does, it does provide an extra complication.
Thank you for introducing yourself.
Absolutely.
Sidney?
I just have to reply, and it indicates there's a fire hydrant within six hundred feet of this property. If that helps.
Wait, there is a fire hydrant within six hundred feet? I thought neither lung had enough pressure for a fire hydrant.
It's, so there's an existing one, and we require it be within five hundred feet, so they would have to install a new one. And there's not enough pressure for a new one within five hundred feet of the plat, okay, so it's one within six hundred feet.
That's a big difference. Commissioner Miller?
So I'm a, I'm a big proponent of fire safety, but having a fire hydrant in another group of people makes me feel a little more comfortable. I mean, I don't know if something sitting down in the state for six months, you know, had something to do with this. They brought it before the change, they let it too long, but they're, I don't know. We conflicted a month, month and a half, but I don't know if that's another variable feet, I mean, is that, can I just get your feet?
Yeah, so what we carry in our engines is LDH, large dammer hose. Each one of our trucks carries a thousand feet. So, for example, the fire we're referring to here tonight, we put nine hundred feet of hose between the closest fire hydrant in the house. So if it is, what was it, six hundred feet away from one of the plots, then, you know, we, we, and all other departments around us and including the city and the volunteer departments, we carry enough large dam or supply hose to reach a hydrant. So, you know, it does take a little more time, like I said, with the spacing, but we carry enough on our trucks for that.
Sidney, do you know where that fire hydrant is on this, is it up here?
Well, it says on the plat, it just says there's a pair.
If you look at the intersection of Doris and State, at the very top bar, it says five hundred, six hundred feet.
Oh, I see, I see.
It's really small.
Okay, so it's six hundred feet from that corner.
I believe it's just down the road towards Brandy Hollow and Highway seventy-six, which is the next intersection there.
Okay, so that's plus one, six hundred feet, then we get a hundred and sixty-four. Let me ask this question, and you may know, you may not know, but this new wastewater program that's scheduled to go into Portland, will that affect this eight-inch line?
I don't think so, considering this is White House Utilities for this plot area. So I don't know if it'll affect anything down that way or not.
Marshall, do you know?
I don't know.
You don't know?
Is that quite a high, a lower elevation or higher elevation?
Best monologist would be a little lower elevation, going away from Portland now.
And will be pushed the water up.
We would probably require another, what we usually do with long stretches like that, we'll have to have, which we did it the other night. We had a fire engine sit at the hydrant, pump from the hydrant to another fire engine up there. So we can boost the pressure with our trucks. So let's flip side of that, we'll just have to have, you know, another truck dedicated to that. So that can take some time to get there, but it's possible.
I'm trying to determine how far from that corner is the last house?
Thousand feet.
How many?
About a thousand.
About a thousand feet, which is what he's got on his truck. Yeah, it's Well, if you can't, I mean, if that's a six, if you can't put another fire hydrant on there, then I don't know, this is, I don't know that we've from standpoint, from my standpoint, I don't know that we can really deny that. I mean, we can do anything we want, but if he's got a thousand feet on his truck, and there, there's not going to be, for the foreseeable future, enough pressure for another fire hydrant. I don't know. They paid the amount to the fire, volunteer fire department. Sir?
The alternative, if, 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 what's the alternative, Sid, if, if we don't, if we do not approve this waiver? What results from that, please?
Sure, good question. So essentially, they would be able to do a two-lot line, they would not be able to do a three-lot major.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
While we have the expert here, just, I want to make sure, I asked you to clarify your earlier statement. You said that each truck has a thousand gallons on it, that you have, and y'all have five trucks, was it?
We, yeah, essentially, each fire engine we have has a thousand gallons. We currently have three, and then we'll have a reserve here in a little while as we work out some other things. But each truck has a thousand gallons, our tanker has twenty-five hundred gallons. With our utility, Portland will probably hit their first, so they have seven hundred fifty gallons on their truck. But, you know, we'll be pretty close behind, so.
So in fighting a fire, on a steep learning curve here, in fighting a fire in this situation, would a truck with seven fifty or a thousand gallons go to the fire first and start extinguishing it while another truck is being set up to boost the pressure for it to be pushed through? The thousand hoses, thousand-foot hose to get to the furthest line?
Yes.
And you said that would take twenty to thirty minutes, just guessing?
If it happens that close, maybe a little less. Like I said, it all depends on response times of our neighboring departments and our cestals and stuff like that. So, you know, would be able to have it that close and get those resources there. If it's that close within a thousand figure right near it, it may take an extra five to five to ten minutes. And then if the hydrant's not there, we're going to have to do the other, with water shuttles and stuff like that, that's when it'll light up more. But I hate giving like an approximate time, because there's so many variables that go into it.
Yeah, sure.
But, you know, you know, just like best case scenario, our station staff that's close in Portland's right there, you know, that stuff would be accomplished within five to ten minutes.
So the, the response time, because, and I actually drove out there and saw the property, it was very close. I don't know where the Porton Line is, but it was very close.
Right there, the Hallow Line. So if our automatic aid is there, then it paged out automatically. If the sub will get there, you know, if they're in a station, they'll be there within five minutes. And we'll be there probably not much longer after, so.
So I guess the, the catch in all of this would be with that situation, if the trucks with the seven fifty or a thousand gallons, whichever, and we have three of those, they start exten, well, one of them needs to be stationed at the hydrant, so you have two. Once that water's gone, then you're waiting on the pumped water.
Yes.
And is there, and I know this is purely speculation based on the size of the fire and everything, but, and maybe you made the statement a moment ago, how quickly does that thousand gallons run out typically?
Mostly, we, our attack lines were just, you know, the normal fire attacks, somewhere around a hundred and fifty psi, which is gal, or, well, hundred and fifty gallons a minute. So, you know, if, if we're consistently flowing water, you know, under the thousand gallon, we'll get five to seven minutes of continuous water flow.
So there could potentially be in this, and I realize this is all guesswork, but potentially there's twenty minutes to where the water's run out and we're waiting on the other, the hybrid.
Depending on the size, yeah, there could be some of that. You know, like I said, there's, like you said, there's a million different ways to look at it. But in the worst case scenario, they're having a constant flow of a lot of water, and maybe there, you know, we could drink something like that.
I have one other, and I don't know that you can answer this. With regard to the payment in lieu, and maybe this is more of an administrative question for the planning department. But I saw that two thousand was paid. Based on my experience in working with ferry piping, you can't hardly get a contractor to show up for two thousand dollars, much less dig down, install a hydrant in place. And maybe this is towards Sydney or to Marshall. Do we have a standard for what the amount needs to be in?
There was never, they could have given two dollars.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, that was-
Any damage, that's why we changed it. Sorry.
That's up to me. Thanks. Let me thank you too for showing up, I'm happy you were taking out your time on a Tuesday night, thank you.
Absolutely, no problem.
I have a question for the chief. Structure fires are fairly rare in town, aren't they? I mean, of all the calls you get and-
I mean, we, it varies, I mean, my department, we average going to twenty-five a year.
Twenty-five a year?
We had three in one day, a couple days.
I was saying, we had, I know we've had two or three.
It, it, I, I, we, yeah, statistically wise, it's not many, but, you know, we have to be prepared for worst case scenario. Fires are worst case scenario, so, like I said, like I said. We, we, we went a month and a half without having one, and then we had three in one day. So, which, you know, some of that's mutual response and whatever, but like I said, we've got to be prepared worst case scenario.
True.
And we prepare to have a fire every day, that's our job, too.
Okay, well, thank you. Sidney, how does going from three lots to two remedy the problem?
It's just a change in the subdivision regulations, so you're talking about one less house that might potentially catch fire if you're talking about hydrant.
All right, well, any other questions? Then we need to adjourn that motion.
There's, I'm going to make a motion, but it's going to get in with a speech. I'm actually going to make a motion with the number one of A and B for a couple of reasons. One, the two thousand dollar donation, this was technically approved before it changed. I mean, this is unusual, this is not somebody wearing a brand-new ten-lot subdivision without putting in fire hydrants. I'm all about less safety issues. I think I'm on C on social media. But this is a very unique situation. And if anybody comes again with something new, it's not going to happen for me, so. But I will motion for number one, A and B, just because it is so unique. And it, you know, it started this in twenty twenty-three, was approved, it missed the deadline, it was something said, I guess, the department was moving, and it got displaced, and it's set for six months, from what I'm understanding. But please make sure that this owner knows that this is a A and B one-time exception if it passes.
For forty years, this survey, this has never happened to yourself.
Jim, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Is, Mr. Belcher?
We have one other comment. I think, and respectfully to Ms. Miller, I think included in the packet concerning the donation amount, the regulation actually reads that it needs to be equivalent to as if you had installed a hydrant. the regulation actually reads that it needs to be equivalent to as if you had installed a hydrant. So I don't know, you know, about any donation, but what was in the regulations reads that it has to be equivalent to the installation of a hydrant.
Is that where, Sydney?
It does. I looked back at a couple other donations, um, after Mr. Belcher talked this afternoon, and they were about two to three thousand each, so.
Commissioner Miller?
I know that Josh and I had talked about this, Sydney, um, back before we even changed this regulation, and some of them were given three, five hundred dollars. I mean, it was ridiculous. I think one was even fifty dollars. Um, so, you know, no, we're putting in a fire hydrant, but I mean, that wasn't really the intent with, with that anyways, but I mean, there was literally nothing in the regulations that said, it just said, aid donation. So I'm not really, I mean, I think two thousand dollars is, I mean, that was pretty standard of what was happening before we changed these regulations.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick, just a quick comment. When I looked at that payment, I believe that was made in good faith. I think the timing was a lawful situation. Hearing that that regulation is now in a long workplace, saying that, you know, you can just make a donation, the problem goes away, makes me feel a lot better. I think this is probably a lawful, also hearing that six hundred feet away is a hydrant, and it sounds like the, the, well, the fire department isn't going to deal with that. They're not going to have to go drive three miles and suck water out of the lake, try to put this house fire, you know? That makes me feel a lot better, so, uh, that's, that's why I seconded it. I think we should consider this, this, you know, technically, just insert.
Permission?
I was all ready to deny this, just straight out here, um, but I appreciate the comments from the assistant chief, um, which makes me feel better, in the fact that there's that, um, hydrant six hundred feet away and that the, that the trucks are able to get from, from hydrant to house in, in a reasonable amount of time, so. But I appreciate the comments, and I know it was a stimulating circumstances, so, um, I just appreciate that information.
Any others? Okay, uh, go ahead with the roll call.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Elston?
Yeah.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
Okay, that's your answer. Thank you. All right, Sydney, what do we have next?
And the last item for review is the Adeline subdivision final plat. So this is already on the preliminary plat approval and construction plans, and at, by the time it comes to this body, then the infrastructure is also installed. So what we're looking at here is nineteen residential building lots, um, and four common open space lots on thirty-two point two acres in the Adeline subdivision, which is located on Forest Retreat Road. This is a rural residential property, and the representative is Greenlid. This does have public water and sewer provided by the House Utility District. The preliminary plat was approved in September of twenty-three, and there have been, um, two subsequent revisions that were included in the packet. Uh, the last one was approved in, um, August of this year. And they ultimately started, I believe, with twenty-one lots and have now reduced it down to nineteen. Through that process, here is an aerial image from, I believe, January of this year. This is the original sketch plat that was approved in twenty twenty-two. And this was the original preliminary plat that was approved. The first revision, the second revision, and now the final plat is for you this evening. You can see that it's substantially compliant with the preliminary plat approval. There was a surety letter that was, um, drafted from the county engineer outlining the outstanding improvements that needed to be made and calculated, I believe, at two hundred eighty-eight thousand minutes later on the presentation. And these were the pictures that were taken from our stormwater manager that shows the site with the pavement down and the drains installed there. And the beginnings of the sign. Um, the findings of fact, again, that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning, uh, and regulations and subdivision regu- regulations that are in effect, that it does not create adverse impacts upon the adjoining property owners, and that no property owner or smaller property owners will benefit materially from the approval. I do want to, I do actually want to go back and point out something that's a little bit unique with this one. Um, when it was approved, it's hard to see on this plat here, but there is a large buffer between these properties and the adjacent neighborhoods that you would not see typically in a straight zone piece of property that was put up as a condition of, or, um, that was put up at the time of the initial approval. Um, typically, when you're going from one, like, the same zone to the same zone, that buffer is not there. And, uh, I wasn't here at that time, but I can imagine that it was just to be respectful to those property owners and potentially to help with some drainage concerns. So I did want to note that because that's not typical. And then, generally speaking, um, prior to plat recording, then the letter of credit has to be provided to, uh, take care of any remaining improvements that's going to be finalized in the site. The as-built will need to be provided in case the roads deviated from, well, you know, the construction plans, which happens. Um, and then any punchless items from the county would need to be taken care of. Um, and then after all comments are addressed, the plat, maybe the final plat may be assigned and recorded for building lots to be sold. So the example motions, um, to approve the final plat with all staff comments, and then as you can see here, we've kind of noted the as-built, the surety letter with that two hundred eighty-eight thousand is what's calculated as remaining improvements, um, finalization of the site, and then, um, they'll maintain the outstanding law through letter of credit until the county accepts the surety to approve. Two, to deny the final plat, or, uh, based on which subdivision, um, or zoning requirements that haven't been met, or three, to defer the item to provide, to, um, for additional information.
Do we have anybody to speak on that final plat?
Just the applicant.
Just the applicant, okay. Questions from anybody to final plat? Go ahead, John.
As everyone on this commission is aware, I said, well, with the exception of Mr. Elston, didn't know that he had been added. Welcome, by the way. I sent an email asking Marshall and Sydney about whether or not the retaining walls on the property uh, complied with the requirement of getting a professional engineer seal on it, stating that they designed it, whether or not this project fell within that window or not. Marshall responded with documentation showing that the retaining wall around the pump house uh, was sealed by an engineer, but I didn't see a response regarding the, uh, other retaining walls, because there's several. So I just like clarification as to whether or not the four-foot requirement is effective on this property or not. So, um, let Marshall respond.
Sure, but they provided, um, it's called a branding of versatile block for the other walls, and was typical with, with, like, manufacturers, like companies provide, you know, certain types of block. They, if you follow their specifications, that's kind of the standard yet installed in the wall, too. So every brand is a little different, but the versatile block is a pretty common, uh, common type of wall people use. And it'd be that website, there's several details that cal, um, you know, how to, you know, how did you agree then? How far to lay it back, you know, how much time to use the wall, about that sort of thing, but. But typically, when it's, when it comes to those types of walls, we don't, you know, we don't have, like, an engineer standard set drawing because the, we kind of improvised that information. I don't know if that makes, makes sense, but. It is similar to like T, like, when I'm thinking like a, like T-DOT has a similar thing with their standard drawings, and T-DOT has a set of standard drawings that, you know, they use on the projects that have retaining walls, and, and those are, you know, it's still a standard by an engineer, but they're standard drawings that they use, that have the same quote marks.
I guess that brings into question, in my mind, then, um, you know, our regulation that we passed was anything above four feet, you'd be seated. So, and then once again, maybe this is grandfathered in, depending upon the timing of all of this. Uh, I hear what you're saying about T-DOT. I will state, and I would almost sort of state my reputation on it. At some point, those detailed drawings have to seal them, if they were to seal them. But, you know, and once again, I'm just, you know, I, I went out there, saw the property, it's beautiful, the walls look great. I, I just want to make sure that, you know, the county, the planning, engineering, everything, that all the regulations have been captured.
Okay, any other questions? Good, no problem.
So, yes or no? Are the walls certified by an engineer? Yes or no?
The case is no for the, yes.
Because there's a part of the regulation, nobody says it's grandfathered in. So what are we doing? We're going, we're going against our. We're not following our regulation, and we took a lot of time putting in with the law, and then to, uh, in different, that's all I'm saying.
Go ahead, John.
Sydney or Marshall, do we know if this is grandfathered in?
I don't have the timing of it, but if one thing we can do, um, you know, it's all that we agreed to, it's not done in the past, is if, we, we can request an engineer to certify the walls in the bills per, you know, per the, you know, plan or per the, you know, manufacturers, you know, recommendation. They give a little letter, just kind of to say that, and that's not, I guess, not uncommon, and we have, things happen from time to time. People build a wall, don't realize that these engineer, they come back and get engineered certified. You know, that's, that's, that's pretty, pretty common. There's no way that you can do that.
My question would be, do you think they're certifiable?
Well, I think engineers, that's kind of been the, kind of determined, but I think they, I think they are, I think they're twice additional proof, like the photos and the applicant has, they can show an engineer, did you agree, the backfill, I think that's easy, an easy being approved.
I, I didn't see them on the concrete block, or.
But, but, yes, there's a signal, is it signal wall, the blood block, you know, block wall, where they, they got the, the block, the stack stem, or not stack stem, just the stack block. Did you agree to place back into?
Okay, so, so they're geable, or, right, you know, okay, they, they lay back there, you know, okay, okay. Well, it would seem like, you know, for us to do our due diligence, we should get that certification.
Well, I mean, I think it's easy enough to make a condition of approval, I mean, for staff, we can, we can collect that, and just.
Okay.
It's on the.
So we can put that as a condition on the final plat, is that right? Okay. Good point, yes. Okay. Uh, any other questions for the project? Go ahead, John.
I'm sorry, did have one other. Um, it mentioned in the packet that, um, they'd have to get a permit for the sign. I know they're constructing a sign, and I know there's already an existing sign as part of the fence, but just more clarification, I mean, that all those Ts and Is have been crossed and dotted.
Would we open it?
Uh, we can get that prior to recording the plat.
Okay, so that would be another condition. So we'd have E and F. All right, any other questions or statements on the project? Mr. Strong?
I'd like to make a motion to approve number one, with those additional E and F comments, um, and with, uh, Sydney respectfully, verbally articulating those two requirements, before the both of them so little goes out, but what E and F, just want to say, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Can you go ahead?
Certainly, and with condition E, to, uh, submit and obtain sign permit approval, and with condition F, to provide engineer drawings of the retaining walls.
Satisfactory, everybody? Okay. Uh, if there are no other questions, we'll go ahead and do the roll call.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Mr. Elston?
Yes.
Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
Okay, we have one negative, the rest are positive, so it passes? Go ahead with that number six, Sydney.
Certainly, and this is just a resolution to approve the planning commission's schedule and meeting calendar for twenty twenty-six. Um, this is something that we do every year, so that it's approved by this body, and essentially, people will come, say, hey, I'm trying to supply, you know, here's your some middle deadlines, as document, and then approved through this body. We did make one change, uh, that we will notify most of the major applicants about, and that is the submiddle date. It's another day following the planning commission, rather than counting backwards from the meeting for thirty days, or two each meeting, and that just helps it to be much easier to track and follow for everybody. Um, so there's a couple months to have an additional week, so that's the one significant change. A second one, uh, is that preliminary plats are going to require a pre-application meeting that's already in the zoning resolution, but we have to that language to our submiddle calendar, um, just again to help make sure that the boxes are checked. And I provided you with a sample preliminary plat checklist that will be put online and provided to the applicants as well. Hopefully, to streamline the process and just make it clear so that this process on the back end flows much smoother.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by, um, Strong? Do you want to do a roll call, and can I hear it, or just? Uh, we'll just, all in favor, say aye, opposed, passing, and. And we have our summary of administrative approvals. I was curious about number four, which was about six. If you want to say anything about the others, that's fine, but I. If you want to say anything about the other ones, that's fine, but I, I was curious as to what that was all about.
Sure, so moving to that one. This one is the one that came before you a month or two ago with the consolidated plat. The one you're asking about is this right here. This had a couple of different soil amendments because the topography on this lot is very, very challenging. And they requested to add an accessory building beside the home for a garage. So it went to the Board of Zoning and Fields for a variance. And in that process, they amended the soils area in the home and out of the soils area and also the accessory building. So that's something that received a variance approval. And when it's a small lot, we're asking that they do a flat amendment to document that so that we don't have to try to figure out what happened eight years from now.
And the one you just showed that we discussed was in last month, that where there were maybe going to be sinkholes and stuff. What was the final resolve on that?
Oh, right, so that was approved, and this lot was consolidated, and they're going to go for their very large two-bedroom home.
So that was, that came one month, the two months. Okay, does anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Chrissy, did you have a question?
Not about this item, but I have another question.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Anna.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we met last month on a special session to discuss the shipping containers and things. I was just wondering if we could get an update on, you know, the status of that, and what we can expect in the future.
So essentially, the result of that meeting was that you guys wanted to approve it. And that is, so the Health and Safety Board is the one that the language came out of, that they were looking to modify that document. And that's really a county commission document. So if you would like to work on additional direct language, the vast majority of the language that you saw in that resolution was their language from the building codes department related to that Health and Safety document. There were just a few things that we added to clean up which body approves what and what they do, and they do. So it would really need to go back to the Health and Safety Board for their language on what's needed from the codes end. And then we would work on the language in terms of how we incorporate it in the zoning resolution for those text changes that goes before the county. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I know we have made some suggestions for clarification and things like that. I just, you know, I noticed it wasn't on the agenda tonight, so I just wanted to find out. But it sounded like there's a little bit of homework to be done before we may see it again, right?
Right, yeah, a lot of, a lot of that language with the roof pitch and all of that is all codes-related, Health and Safety Board. Because they're the ones that currently do not allow shipping containers at all. We don't address it except to allow on a temporary plot basis when people are rebuilding construction. But, you know, that's the documented approach. So it's just the enforcement or they have to change their code, and then we change ours to match.
I just wanted to make sure there's nothing outstanding in our, from our commission here.
Is there a state Health and Safety Board, what, what?
I think it's a county, like a county one, again, a county commission regulatory document. They come, and I'm none. And they incorporate language from the International Building Code into that. And I honestly, it's a little beyond my scope of expertise into what all those.
If there are, I'm trying to use some clarification.
This came from the Edward Construction Fields, which I believe you work on consulting the functions of those two bodies for construction fields that take care of all those functions.
Incidentally, I was at a funeral in Southern California and drove right through the Long Beach Harbor. Let me tell you why people want to make houses out. Those things are stacked ten, twelve, twenty high and take acres and acres of storage in that Long Beach Harbor. I had no idea. I've got some, my wife took some pictures, and I'll have to give it to you guys. You won't believe. And, and the pictures that she took, I'll do it justice because there are so many more acres than the few pictures we took care of. It's unbelievable. Can you show them?
I want to be able to report. Same thing as, as Mr. Issa. We had a special call meeting at the end of the month on a Wednesday so we could get this on the agenda so we could get it approved. And now we have new information that says that we can't even approve it. I'm, I'm beyond confused. We feel like we're beating a dead horse, like, I mean, what are we waiting on? We had a special call meeting after our normal meeting on the week that we're supposed to have off, on Wednesday night, to get this resolved, and then nothing. It's kind of like the twenty-fifty plan, it's very frustrating.
Was there a question in there? Or did we?
The question is, is what are we doing, like, tomorrow to get this, I mean, tomorrow?
You can respond to that.
Well, my understanding at that meeting was that you didn't want to approve the resolution as written with the regulatory language. You just want to approve those. So the approval would have to come then from the Health and Safety Board of Construction. We can't move forward with a resolution that was proposed because you guys were denying that. So that's, that's where this is. We would have to come up with some new direct language, have work study sessions, and then move it forward with conjunction and rewrite then from the codes department first.
So then, back to my question, the project, we wait three weeks to even address it. And in fact, it's never addressed with that study session, like, none. I mean, this is all new information. So now we're going to wait, like, till January? Do we do anything?
Well, we, we made a lot of, we suggested a lot of changes. We have a lot of problems with the document. So, well, if I'm understanding it correctly, we have to go to Construction Appeals. And they have to give us new language from Construction Appeals. That's eight members on that board. Okay. It's Barry Breiley and John Janong and, and all of those. So now, what can we do to speed up the process? Because obviously, Commissioner Miller's in, in her, is, uh.
Actually, I'll just, I'll call Marshall Moore and see what we do.
Marshall Wright?
Not this one.
Oh, Marshall. Mr. Strong.
He's probably very thankful.
To add to the last two speakers, I mean, we are the enforcement, you can tell me correctly from all of them, we are, and we, your office is the enforcement of that regulation saying that there's no containers can be put in the room. Is that correct?
That's incorrect.
All right. Where does that one person, is the name John, uh?
It's Todd, over there, codes.
Todd, Todd, codes. All right. So my question is, we got people out there out of compliance. Is he, is he on pause, is he on official pause? Is everything, all these people that have these storage containers that we really want to have storage containers, but codes don't allow it, what is going to be done? Is there going to be a pause for any fines, any illegal actions? Where are we at right now? I guess that's what Commissioner Miller was asking, and I'm asking from a different perspective.
I can't speak to their enforcement activity. I know he said he had gotten the four of the seven that they had in the past two years moved or taken down. So that's three maybe remaining. And I don't know how they're handling it right now. My guess is they're going back to the drawing board and reworking their language to accommodate the, they want to approve it. But they also still have to meet International Building Code requirements for these things. So my guess is they're working on their language.
And I understand that the people, I've got that. But you got people that still have containers out there. And then you got, there's a few that really don't want shipping containers, is going to try and enforce the calendar to enforce the codes on books, we still have to come through. And either somebody needs to tell them that ain't going to happen, or everything's on pause. There needs to be an official answer, this is the, to the parties that are involved.
I can tell you right now, when people call because it went on the news and they call us, we can do shipping containers, all the things. We tell them, no policies have changed at this time that will require approval through the county commission. So they are not permitted.
I bet you appreciate the TV camera from that. And the experience.
Y'all, they're my first time, really interesting.
Well, for my clarification, I, I don't understand why they have to have a rain roof. We have, this building here has a flat roof. And, you know, so where the, are you involved at all with the, with the construction fields people? Marshall, you, who, who is?
Marshall.
Marshall Wright?
Wright.
Okay. Okay, well.
And my understanding again is that this is all regulatory language that came from the International Building Code.
I see, I see. Well, you know, and, and I'm not a big fan of the containers, you know. I like Victorian architecture, so that tells me where I'm at. But, but I, I do see that there is a need in this country for those things to be used for something. And that was made very clear to me when I was in Los Angeles a couple weeks ago. So I'll be interested to see what you have to say with, with Marshall in the morning. Because, you know, those things are good enough to be a bomb shelter. I mean, they're much better with, much more stout, the regular steelhouse, they all look pretty. But we have seen some pictures where they look pretty nice, so. I am going to, I think it's really important that we, we work on this twenty-fifty comprehensive plan as quickly as possible. So I'll get together with staff, and we'll see what some alternatives are, if it's Judge Sutton, if it's somebody else. And I think, and I think the public, you know, is asking enough questions about that. I think we need to, we need to put a firecracker under that one, too. So if anybody's got any suggestions, let me know, and I'm going to be moving forward on that this week. Any other questions or comments for the cause?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, my first rule. Second, my Mr. Issa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?